Good evening, everybody. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
I see all members present. Is Chris on?
No.
Can't get into the meeting.
Is that Chris?
Hang on a second. Here's Catherine.
Oh, hold on, please. Is that Chris?
Yes.
Hi, Chris. What's the trouble? Okay. Okay, I'll take some notes while you're working on that. Okay, thanks. Bye. Chris is gonna try dialing in. If it doesn't work, she's gonna come down to the office.
Okay.
Okay. In the meantime, we can just proceed and we'll take some notes.
Well, we've got all board members present, and I'll let you wing it with the attendees, Catherine. Thank you very much. I've got a brief first selectman's briefing. Just a little more update on the old wagon shed property.
We, um, are we gonna do hear from public?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Um, is there any public to be heard?
Uh, I have something about it. Sorry, go on, Joe.
Okay. You want me to go?
Sure.
Um, I would just like to be heard when you bring up, um, B, um, seven C, and also eight F.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you.
Any other public to be heard from?
Uh, I have something I wanna bring up, but I don't know whether to try and add it as an agenda item or just speak to it during public to be heard, persons to be heard. So, um, Bill, uh, some boards and commissions are not adhering to basic legislation and protocols, which leaves the town vulnerable to legal challenges, FOI violations and fines. Uh, every member of every board is really accountable for ensuring that they do fulfill their board business in a professional and above-board manner. So, um, here's a couple of, a few things that have come up. They've come up very recently over the last two months. A board member resignation is not valid until the town clerk receives the resignation from that member. Uh, we have a situation now in one of the boards or commission where members have been added to the board illegally, and actions initiated by those members can be challenged quite easily. Uh, it all started with the fact that the people, there are a couple of people resigned, and they didn't give their notification to the town clerk. And until it goes to the town clerk, it's not official at all. So, that's a great example of some of the things that perhaps these boards don't know. Another one is, uh, finance board alternates are seated by the board, not the chair, unless the absent member notified the chair or board prior to the meeting as to who should be seated for him or her. And that's legislatively. Uh, also, motions cannot, uh, need to be fully stated for the record, then documented accurately in the minutes. Motions cannot be arbitrarily changed after the fact as part of approving the minutes, nor can the board vote on changes to minutes without knowing what those changes will be. Uh, in one meeting, it was, uh, someone saying, "I'll send them to the, uh, recording secretary after the meeting." And they then went and voted on something that they hadn't all heard. Uh, comparisons of Board of Finance meeting videos and minutes has shown that this has happened at multiple Board of Finance meetings. Not only do these issues lead to challenges and/or FOI issues, they erode public confidence in the boards themselves. So, that's where my concern comes. It's really important that these boards understand what they have, the general rules they have to go by. I recommended to the Board of Finance that they attend CCM training that's coming up this month on ethics, uh, FOI, et cetera. Uh, and hopefully, they will do that, and that's just, not just new members. It's old members too, because it's clear that they don't know what these are. And what will happen is they will, they will be challenged, and I hate to see that happen. We've done pretty well over the years, and I hate to have it go this way. So, those are my comments.
Uh, Catherine, I don't know if you were reading for something or whatever, but are you gonna make those comments part of the minutes?
I will, if you like. I had some notes that I had taken, uh, basically read from them.
First that we've talked about it, and I'd like to go through your notes and, um, just take a look at some of the things for myself, but if you could...
I would assume you've already heard about these. And you were present at some of the meetings.
I was present. I have not heard of any challenges or anything.
Not so much challenges, but...
I've heard rumors that Town Council is being consulted, and I'm not sure why I wasn't informed of that, but I, I haven't seen anything firm or solid that, uh, there's inquiries being made.
All right. Well, you, you would certainly have been at the Board of Finance meetings.
I've attended most of them.
Yeah, and if you, uh, if you go and you look at the minutes, you look at the, the video, you'll see what I mean. Uh, so, uh, and there, there's work to be done there.
But if you would just...
So, I strongly recommend, I strongly recommend that these boards take advantage of the training that CCM has, or, uh, I know that for, which one is it? Um, planning and zoning, they have somebody that will be coming in that's an expert to talk with them, bring everybody up to snuff so that they're all operating the way they need to.
We used to, as a normal course of business, the Board of Selectmen or through the first selectman would arrange Town Council to come in. Anytime there was a municipal election, just to sit down with each of the boards and go over FOI and, and, uh, Chairman Discretion and that sort of thing. I'd certainly be, uh, in favor of trying to facilitate that, but make your comments a part of the minutes, Catherine, and, uh, we'll certainly talk more about that.
Okay.
Any other public to be heard from? Okay, moving on. Uh, again, I've just got brief, uh, first selectman, the, uh, former wagon shed property. I know last time I confirmed that Public Works had installed that gate on the back of the property. And we did, we went a little further. Um, a couple of residents called to our attention that in the front, right off of 44, where you would get to the, uh, cornfields, there was an open road through there, and I inspected and found out that there had been cars going down there. So, we, I had DPW put in small Jersey barriers blocking those areas. So, I'm, I'm confident, as much as I can be confident, somebody can always, uh, uh, come up with a new way to get in, but all the ways that...
Bill, is, is that the, is that the entrance where the state goes in, or is that another one?
I believe it's another one.
Okay.
Although I can't...
Because there is one the state uses.
I can't say for sure. The state can still go in as long as they contact us, and Joe said that, uh, with one of the backhoes, we can move them.
The state, I think the state uses the one over there towards, more towards Wellington with the gate and the lock on it.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And my understanding is that, that gate, they have a key and everything too. They actually install that gate. So, anyway, and we've also posted the property. Uh, we put up a, a couple of dozen signs, and so the property is now posted.
Do we have a no hunting sign?
Um, I haven't actually seen the sign. Joe put them up last week. I'll take a look. Uh, I know it says no trespassing. Whether or not it says no hunting or not, I'm not sure.
I, I think the no hunting sign, sign should be put up because we've had hunters go in. The previous owners had hunters going in there.
Yeah. A general rule of hand, a no trespassing sign will cover that, but, um, I'll take a look at it, and if we can, post that with a couple of other signs, we can certainly...
Previous, the previous owner told us that they, you know, he didn't know who he had given permission to, to go in there, so he couldn't contact them to tell them not to.
Well, that's, I think that's why we're all in agreement to post it, and I, right at this point, until we have some documentation from anybody, nobody is to go on that property without securing permission from the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, my thinking is that the people who were given permission before may not realize that the property changed hands. They may still think it's okay for them. So, uh, no hunting would be a good one to put up.
Uh, the speed signs that we presently have on, uh, North Road and, um, what's the other one, Catherine, we put a sign on?
Well, now I blank out. Um, Turnpike.
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 My intention is to let them run their course as, as we've been made aware of in order for the, uh, Yukon and that to do the, uh, proper measuring of speed limits and traffic. We need to do at least six to eight weeks where they are. My intention is to let that time run out on both of those sites. And then while we're trying to secure other signs for the school, have Public Works move those two signs, uh, to either side of, uh, north and south of the school.
You need to get a, you need to get a permit for the, you need a permit for the...
I might finish, Catherine.
Yeah.
The only thing that, that I've been told by the superintendent, he secured a, uh, permit, but I haven't seen it, so we certainly won't do anything until we look at a permit and, uh, we, we, we have an encroachment permit in order to do that.
Well, uh, Bill, it'll be curious to find out what kind of permit he could have secured. He would have had to know exactly what these signs are and what they do and where they're going to be placed.
Yeah. All, all, all I'm passing on is that he told me he had secured them, but I haven't seen them, so we'll verify that. And we'll make sure we have the right ones in place. Um, I'd like to call it.
I was gonna say, there's one more piece to that. The piece is, is that, um, that's just the signs that are measuring speed and everything for analysis. The, um, signs, um, deterrent, uh, let's just say, uh, signs to make people more aware of what the speed limits are there and, and/or flashing can be put up. They just need a permit as well. So, if we were to pursue that, there are solar signs that can be put up. Not these signs, but other ones that are, that can flash at the appropriate time, you know, when the school's in session, that kind of thing. And those can be put up. You just have to work with the state on that.
Yeah, I've been consulting with the state on that, and just in the matter of trying to get something up before the school year ends and not waiting for months for all of that is, is why I just look at these two signs that we presently got operation and we have available to be in a temporary fix. But I agree that we would put up more sophisticated signs regarding, uh, flashing signs or anything that we can do.
Yeah, it'd be good to start that process.
Yeah. Um, the third thing, just to remind everybody, uh, the reval, revaluation notices, uh, were put in the mail today. Um, so watch your mail. I would ask that, uh, everyone, including particularly the public, read your appeal rights, um, uh, both on, uh, unofficial hearing and, and official hearings, if you've seen those necessary, but to make sure you read those documentations. The fourth item, as you're all aware, and I've been trying to, to forward what I get from, uh, the Health Department regarding COVID, uh, positive cases are certainly still on the rise. And we're gonna be monitoring that very closely. We did have a successful day today. We dispersed, uh, 270 test kits, between the hours of 10:00 AM and, and 4:00 PM. Uh, we included the elderly housing, dispersing some to the library and to the, uh, senior center. Uh, we also used the, the assistance of DPW. We had a list that we got from Social Service of, uh, people who were unable to leave their homes, and those who were delivered to their homes. Um, we're still investigating. We also gave, uh, um, some of the kids to Melissa, to give for people who were, uh, unable to take advantage. By means of transportation or whatever, and I understand half of those have already been dispersed. So, I'd just like to thank everybody. We ended up with half of the, uh, numbers that we were anticipating from the state, but I think all in all, it was a good day, and I, uh, I'm getting positive feedback, but, again, the town acted as a, a team effort, and I appreciate every, everybody's have, efforts on that. And thank you very much.
I have a suggestion. Um, there was a notice that was sent out through TextMyGov that people got that have signed up for COVID-related information, and they got the first notice that said that we were gonna be, uh, receiving the test kits. It was the first date that we had. And they never got another notice saying that that date had changed. Uh, there was something put out on Facebook, which is good. I believe there was something put out on the town website as well. But the people who signed up for TextMyGov are looking for the latest information, and if we can't keep it current, it, the, the whole TextMyGov initiative of sending out information like that, um, uh, on a, I'm gonna say a really current and consistent basis, that will fail. So, I would suggest that when we go to do that, and we know that we have to change gears, that we at least let the public know if we've already sent them out a notice prior to that.
I, my, I didn't go up because we were awful busy today, but I was informed that this morning, once we had the test kits in hand, notices went out on, on, uh, on that, and also there was a correction on that because it was, uh, we needed to clarify something. So, actually, I was told it went out twice. I was happy to hear, last week, before the citizen came out, we had 20 that had signed up in the COVID information section, and today we had 67 total.
What happened was the first time the notice went out, two of them went out. The second one was corrected. There wasn't a subsequent one. I get, I know I get all of the TextMyGov messages. So, I'm just letting you know.
And, um, the only other thing that I wanted to mention are Alpro and the computer. All of our equipment is in, uh, to try to effectuate the, uh, hybrid meetings that we're talking about. Savage is coming in this week, to review, and I've asked to sit in with training with Cheryl, to try to get that into a working capacity, so I would hope by our, uh, next meeting, we'll have positive information for you on that.
Uh, I don't think we should put hybrid meetings in place. I get, I get having the technology in place, but I don't think we should put hybrid meetings in place until we are past this crisis point in the COVID epidemic. Um, to be quite candid, I can't see how they could work, and I don't want us to be the ones who actually initiate kind of a, an event where people are getting, um, infected.
I appreciate your opinion, Catherine. We'll certainly be crossing that bridge when we come to it.
Well, with 40, with 41 people...
Let me just finish one thing, Catherine, please. Before we make any decisions, I'll certainly be consulting with the board, but I think it's important that we get our folks in training and know how to use this stuff so we can make some long-term plans. I don't intend on making any immediate moves on that, particularly without consulting with you and Roger.
Yeah, I suggest that you, uh, start the training just by practicing with some of our employees. That's what we did for some other things, so that once, um, so that you've got the bugs out of it before you give it to the other people.
And I'm gonna move on. Uh, item five, acceptance of the minutes of December 6th. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discuss, discussions, corrections, additions?
Nope.
Hearing none, I'll ask for a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you. Hear from boards, commissions, committees and departments? Anybody to be heard from? Hearing none, we're gonna proceed. Um, old business, discuss reopening strategies, town facilities, update relating to the building of board and, uh, commission meetings. With the surge that we're in, I, I can't see, opening any further than we are, and I, I think we've gotta look at this on a, on a very close basis on what our future plans are gonna be. I would hope by, by our next meeting, we'll be able to make some, some decisions on what we're gonna do or, or what we perhaps curtail. If something worsens drastically in the interim, I'll be calling a special meeting, uh, to discuss that.
Well, if I understand correctly, we had 41 cases of COVID, uh, over a two-week period as of a week ago.
It's definitely on the rise. The good news is the cases that we're hearing about are, uh, a lot less severe than with the Delta or the prior variants. Let's just hope it keeps that way. Um, COVID update, I think we've probably covered that already. As I'm getting the reports in, I'm, I'm trying to forward as best I can, to both the Board of, uh, Catherine and Roger on, on, as I'm getting info, I pass it on.
Right. I have, uh, Eastern Highlands, uh, board meeting. I think it's on the 17th of January, so I can bring some more information back from there.
Very good. Okay, item C, Trampco House Review Committee. I had a discussion with, uh, Bob Byrd last week. He did get back to me. He said he was gonna be running probably a few days late. I was gonna call him today, but we were rather busy here. I will call him tomorrow and find out where we are in this. I emphasized with him yesterday, the time in, last week, I mean, the timing is obvious. And we expected him to live up to his, uh, his contract requirements, and...
Do you think it's advisable to have that board, uh, that, uh, commission, what are we calling it, a review committee, uh, meet, uh, before they receive the report to just kind of get their ducks in a row, figure out how they're gonna operate?
I don't have a problem with that. I would think, let's, let's give him by the end of the week, and if we don't get that report, then try to schedule a, an initial meeting with that committee.
Yeah, it was, it'd be kind of a shame to have us get the report, have them get the report, and then kind of not have a, a plan for how they're gonna approach it.
Yeah, yeah. Didn't we do a scope of work, though, with what we were, uh, expecting?
The work looks like, the scope of work looks like this.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's, it would be more that they would have a discussion amongst themselves to make sure they're all on board with how they're gonna approach it. That's all.
I agree. That'd be beneficial. Any more comment regarding that?
Bill, it's Joan.
Hi, Joan.
Hi. Hi. I'll just wait until I hear from the board as a member of that committee.
Yeah.
I have, I have nothing more to say. I know he's probably running a little late because, um, didn't he get the contract a little late? It was, he sent it in on the 28th of September, and it was not signed by Catherine until about November 3rd, I believe.
He got it in plenty of time to do what he needed to do. It was all discussed with him.
And, and the contract that he signed, Joan, did say that the report would be to us by the end of the year.
And actually, that's what was added to the contract was what was the end date going to be.
Free with that. Yeah.
Uh, we understand. We're all living in tough times right now, and, and, um, we're gonna give him the benefit of the doubt, but, uh, this is not gonna go on like our waiting did the last time. And we're gonna bring this, bring this to a head. Okay, item D, did we ever hear back from Chris or no?
Yeah, I'm on.
She's on. Just listen.
Okay. You gotta, oh, you gotta work it on the phone? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, item D, Regional, uh, School District. We had got some mixed signals, um, about members of the Region 19 Board, um, being required to be on the, uh, reapportionment. And, uh, Chris did a lot of history and work on it, and I don't know if you had a chance to review the, uh, your package for this meeting, but, uh, what we have to do is probably have a motion to unappoint, and, and Chris has talked to both Janice and Tim, unappoint them from the board. And then the Board of Education, and they may have to revise their minutes because they, they felt they were appointing them, but we've got to clear, we've clarified it with them that it's our appointment. Uh, are recommending, uh, Jane and, and Tess, uh, to fill those two statutorily required seats, so...
Bill, would you like two motions then?
I think it'd be clarified, two motions.
Okay, I'd like to, I can make those.
Go ahead.
All right. Uh, I move to unappoint Janice Chamberlain and Thomas, Timothy Rourke from the Regions School District 19 Reapportionment Committee as representatives from Ashford.
Seconded.
Any further comment? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
Uh, I make a motion to appoint Jane Urban and Tess Grousse to act as Ashford's representatives on the Region Old School District 19 Reapportionment Committee.
Seconded.
Any comment? I'll call the motion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you.
What's interesting is that we really don't, our apportionment is not going to change. We just have to be present soon.
Somebody else's fight.
That's nice.
Yeah, for a change. Uh, street lighting. Um, the, our, our local, uh, regional director's been on vacation. I've been, uh, hampering on him as much as I can. I'm gonna follow up that this week. This is regarding the two lights on, uh, that we've talked about previously, and I'll just, I'll keep the board posted on it.
Um, uh, if it's okay, Bill, I'd just like to make mention of, um, I had requested from DOT in, let's see, where was it? In, uh, Palmford and Mansfield. I asked to have, the, prior to, uh, leaving my role as first selectman, I had requested that they replace the Warrenville sign on Route 44 because it had been marked with, um...
The one that was tagged?
Gang graffiti. That has been done. I checked. It's already done. And also, the faded destination sign that was at the intersection of 44 and 89. Uh, it was actually on 89 just before you get to the intersection.
Yep.
Because you, you couldn't read some of the places, the destinations. That's been done as well.
Very good. Thank you. Um, Formation of a Capital Improvement, uh, 2022, 2023, uh, Committee. And I believe in your packet. Hold on one second. Chris, have we finished or heard from all of the groups that are appointing somebody?
No, I, I sent emails to everybody, and I have not gotten, um, responses as yet. I'll resend emails and, um, the only one we've got is Board of Finance.
Okay.
And they appointed all. Um, it's usually taken for granted that Joey's gonna be Public Works. It's usually been the chief for the fire department. Um, somebody, the Board of Education has to appoint somebody. The building committee will probably be Jim Rupert. And, uh, the, the one that's gonna be up for grabs is coming up with a public representative.
Now, we did send out a, uh, the form and asked them to submit it by January 12th. So, we'll have that on hand.
Yep.
And, and, um, let's follow up with those, those different boards, Chris, and, and, and get who their resignees are. Um, as far as the, uh, Ashford Public Representative, uh, I did talk to Mike Zambbo, and he said he would be interested in serving on that. But I think it's premature to, uh, take a vote and appoint anybody till we have a complete board that we can put together, but that is gonna be a critical board that we need to get together. Any other comment regarding that? I'll move on. Item C, uh, consideration of ordinance requests received from the Agricultural, uh, Commission. Uh, I don't know if you folks have had a chance. I did read it briefly, but I hadn't had a chance to, to do it as thoroughly as I'd like. I'd like to carry this on to the next agenda.
That would probably be a good idea also from the standpoint of that's one of the boards that has a, is having a little difficulty with their procedure in terms of bringing on new members. They need to get that straightened out if they haven't already. I know that they're probably working on.
Good, good. So, we'll carry that, uh, particular item, and we can all do our own little research on, on our feelings on that. I'd also like to just get verification from the assessor of the potential impact it might have on our, tax rule. Um, I'd like to have consideration or reappointment of Sherry Much at the position of Ashford Town Clerk, uh, and registrar of vital, uh, statistics to a term beginning January 11th, 2022.
January 1st.
January 1st, 2022, to run to January 1st, 2026. Now, Chris, we have the option... Now, Chris, we have the option of a two, four-year term on that?
No. It's a four-year term, that's in the ordinance.
It's been a four-year term for a few years.
Okay, I, I thought I, I'd heard, Chris, I thought you had said that it was optional, but anyway, I will entertain a motion to that effect.
So moved.
I, let's make sure we state it correctly. Um, I moved, moved, the motion is to reappoint Sherry Much to the position of Ashford Town Clerk and registrar of vital statistics to a term beginning January first, two thousand twenty-two through January first, two thousand twenty-six.
Is that your motion, Roger?
So moved, yes.
Is there a second?
Second. Second.
Any further discussion? I'd just like to take the opportunity to thank her for a long service to our community in a very professional manner.
You may not, well, I was gonna say, you may not be aware, she also, I believe, has achieved kind of like a town clerk rank or certification that is one of the highest ones, so, yes, she's terrific.
I'm not surprised.
And then the vote is?
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, unanimous. Thank you, Sherry. Item E, reappointment of municipal open burning official.
I still have not heard back from the fire department. I'm assuming that it's going to be Andrew Campbell again. We appointed him last year, but I haven't gotten word from Tom. So I will follow up on that tomorrow.
Is there a deadline on that?
Sorry?
Is there a deadline on that reapportionment?
Is, is, are we required under some sort of a timeframe when we have to have one, or does, does the same person act in that position until we fill it?
No, it gets done at the beginning of each year. We have to reappoint it at the beginning of each year. So in January, we have to reappoint it, so it can wait till the next meeting.
Good.
Okay, well, we'll carry that then. F American Rescue Plan, potentials for project funding, et cetera. We are in your packet, you'll see, Chris did a little research. There's examples of Will, what Wellington did, is doing. I've got some inquiries, it's a very tough time of the year to, to get feedback from a lot of people. There seems to be mixed signals that any item over twenty thousand needs to go to a town meeting. And then there are some that are saying that all items have to go to a town meeting. So I would ask that you bear with me to get you a little more information about what other towns are doing and get some more feedback. In the meantime, we're still taking recommendations. And I think after our next meeting, and we see how this COVID thing is going or whatever, that we start considering setting up a public hearing and starting to move on these processes. I know we're getting almost daily calls about the broadband and wanting to get going on that, as, as well as a couple of other things. The radio systems, the seventy and eighty bands, Public Works has done, we got two loner units from the state. DPW has been doing extensive testing with it. We also had them lend the two units to the fire department. They've also tested it, and they're very happy with the results. In fact, Joe was sitting in my office today because I didn't want to make an announcement until we had those test kits in hand. And he had Nick go down to the Mohegan Sun, and he was in, inside the Mohegan Sun. And you would have thought they were in the next room, it, the clarity of it. So I'm very impressed with the system and the way it works. So we're proceeding on that, but that's just another one of those things that I think pushes us all the more to get this thing going and making some commitments, but so stay tuned on that, but I'm very happy with the results.
Bill, can I say something, Joan Bowley, I asked in the beginning?
Yes, Joan.
To say on this. It, it says potentials for project funding, then it lists, is there more potential than what's listed here?
Nothing is carved in stone, Joan, at this time, we're certainly looking at everything. These are things that, that kind of jumped out. And Roger, Catherine, you can jump in anytime, but jumped out to us to be have some very valid points to it and, and positive impact to the community. But no, by no means are we eliminating anything else at this point that we know is not, obviously not covered by ARPA.
And that they're good, and that are going to conform to the requirements of, of the of the funding requirements, too.
Correct.
Yeah, actually, Joan.
Well, I look.
Joan.
Go ahead.
Actually, this was the list that I had pulled together before and put out here, they were ones that I had looked at in light of what the rules are for the broadband funding, and these were ones that came from the various departments, if you will. They weren't ones that came from the public. And the survey was to bring the ones in from the public. And so these were just ones that put out, we put out here just to make sure they didn't fall away. They were not done as a as part of the survey. Okay, but the ones in the survey, I know the selectmen are taking very seriously and just looking to see if some conform to, if, how many of them conform to what the ARPA funds are supposed to be used for. And I'll give you a couple of examples, one is that we got feedback from some people in the pu- public through the survey that they wanted their taxes reduced as part of ARPA funding. Well, you can't use ARPA funding for that. You can, you can use them for a number of other things. And there was one thing on here on the, I just wanted to make mention of on the broadband. With the broadband, if I understand correctly, it will take at least six months for Spectrum to get started on doing the work that they need to do with the polls and everything for the broadband. So that's something to keep in mind, we need to be able to manage public expectation if we do go forward with that to make sure that they understand it's not going to happen overnight.
Well, why I'm, why I'm interested is because pickleball court was mentioned the same night we mentioned adding the Trampco property. And I see the pickleball court is there, and I don't see the Trampco property.
Did you already, I think you'd already done one through the ser-, someone had done one through the survey on the Trampco property, is that correct?
I didn't do anything on that. I don't know, Catherine. It was said by Kay Warren and I.
We've got a booklet here, and I believe somebody did mention the Trampco Houses potential, I don't remember offhand who it was.
Right.
It certainly has not been crossed off the list.
Yeah, it was Kay, it was Kay, and I think we were remiss in not adding it to this list because it was mentioned. But again, these ones were mentioned by the various departments, they weren't coming from the public.
Was pickleball by a department?
Yes, it was, it was actually supposed to be on the capital improvement plan for last year. And it was cut from the plan. So it was cut from the plan because the Board of Finance was very concerned about dipping into the Capital Down Referring Recurring Fund more than they had to. So last year, they had put something through, went through the Capital Improvement Committee and everything. When ARPA came up, that's when Sherry York spoke with me, and she's the department head who looks out for those things, and that's how it got on this list.
The committee is very supportive of that, Joan.
It was mentioned by Janet Bellamy.
No, that was well after the fact, Janet came on and actually had also reached out to me separately, but she came on much later. The, this came on here before that.
Well, again, the Trampco property, again, Catherine, was mentioned three times, not just once by Kay. I'm just bringing that up because I'm emphasizing that.
I just said we were remiss in not putting it on the list. I'm just letting you know that the things that are sitting on the list are the ones that came from the departments themselves. Okay, so it won't be overlooked. If, either we put it on this, Bill, either we put it on this list, or we make sure that we have something in the survey that indicates it, even if we put it in the survey.
And, and certainly, I'm, I'm sure, once we call a town meeting, we'll be a point of open discussion on that also.
Absolutely.
And the committee, the committee that's working with Bob Hurd will have more information, too, towards all that, which will be good.
Right, and one of the things you do need under, everybody needs to understand about ARPA is that you've got to have solid information, very specific kind of information. And it has to be documented every which way in order to be able to be reported on properly for ARPA funding. Otherwise, the town ends up eating the cost.
That'll be done.
Okay, folks.
Thank you.
Anything else, Joan?
Not right now, thank you.
Item G, Boards and Commissions, Committee Appointments. We have no one, Chris, for the inland wetland at this point?
Possibly for the next meeting, Lenny wanted to hold off until the second meeting in January.
Okay. Anybody for Board of Assessment Appeals, alternate seat?
Al Macaron was suggested to fill the seat, the vacant alternate member seat that goes with Joe Peters. Board of Assessment Appeals has three members and three alternates. And the political affiliation of each alternate has to coincide with the political affiliation of each regular member. So Al Macaron would be a Democrat to complement Joe Peters' seat.
Did Al say that he wants the seat, I mean, has he confirmed that?
Yes.
I'll make a motion for this one if you want. I move to appoint Al Macaron to fill the alternate member seat on the Board of Assessment Appeals to November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Conservation Commission, reappointment of all members?
That's what I got from Loretta. I'm sorry, I didn't list all the members, if you want, you can wait till the next meeting. Or just make a blanket.
Roger, your pleasure on that, I don't have the names in front of me.
I don't either.
I'm comfortable with, I'm, I'm actually comfortable with reappointing all current members, but um, if you want to wait, that's fine, we can be more specific.
Well, if you want to have your motion include authorizing the first selectman to appoint, to, to name all of the existing members, I could do that.
Okay, let me try this then.
I'm looking at it right now, I may have it for you in a second.
Okay.
Okay.
Still there?
I'm here.
He's looking something up.
Conservation Commission. I've got Loretta Warble on until November twenty-first of twenty-three, so she wouldn't be one of them.
Right.
Same thing with John Ortoico. He's on till twenty-three.
Right.
Lynn Haslin is on till twenty-three. Hold on, let me go to everybody I'm looking at, Chris, is on until November twenty-first of twenty-three.
Is there an al-, is there an alternate member slot that's open?
Not according, not according to the last directory I'm looking at. And it's showing that their terms all started November sixteenth of this year. I don't remember voting for them.
We didn't, I must, I'll have to check with Sherry tomorrow because she usually sends me the reminder. I will check with her, we can hold off till the next meeting.
Why don't we do that?
Okay, okay.
Okay. Ashford Housing Authority, reappoint Dennis Poitras to December thirty-first of twenty-six. And Ann Phillips. That sounds familiar, Roger. The December thirty-first of twenty-five.
I'll make that motion, but I'm going to make it in two motions.
Sounds good.
I make a motion to reappoint Dennis Poitras to the Ashford Housing Authority to Decem-, to December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six.
Is there a second? Any discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I make a motion to yeah, I'm sorry, I make a motion to appoint Ann Phillips to the Ashford Housing Authority to December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five.
Is there a second?
So, so moved, seconded.
Does she know about this, Roger?
She's sitting here slapping me in the back of the head.
Hearing no further discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and Ann, Ann, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
And thank you for your patience with Roger.
Yes, we all thank you for that.
Recreation Commission, fill one alternate member. Term to expire April first of twenty-two. I don't have anybody at this time. Nobody, okay. Commission on Aging, fill vacant seat created by the resignation of Elaine Williamson Pandoffo. The term associated with Pandoffo expires June thirtieth of twenty-three. Are there any takers on that or recommendations, Chris?
No.
All right, we'll carry that on the next agenda. Last item on the agenda, and I believe you folks should have a copy of it, are tax refunds. The, the statute is not cited here, but it's twelve dash one fifty-nine.
One twenty-nine.
One twenty-nine?
Yep.
I reviewed the list, I have no problem with just kind of voting that the list be approved. It's a
Is it a long list?
Yeah, there's probably about fifteen.
I emailed it to you, Catherine.
Yeah, I couldn't, I'm sorry, I tried opening the document every which way with Sunday, but I wasn't able to.
There's fifteen of them.
They're all straightforward.
Yeah, as long as they're attached to the minutes, that would be great. Um, because I haven't reviewed the list, I'm gonna let Roger make the motion.
I'll take the motion.
Is there a second?
Bill, I'll let you second it only because I haven't reviewed it.
I will second it. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I'll abstain.
Thank you very much. Is there any other business for the good of the Board?
Hi, folks. Th- this is Luther Prowk, I'm sorry to butt in right at the end, I, I joined just after Boards and Commissions were supposed to speak on the Ag Commission. I wasn't aware that the communication we sent was received by the Board. I never got any confirmation, and I wasn't noticed that it was placed on tonight's agenda, so that's why I was late to the show. But I, I would appreciate it if you guys are going to discuss it a future agenda, the Ag Commission would be more than happy to be a part of that meeting and be able to answer questions and provide insight as to the communication that was sent.
That would be great.
Very good, Luther, we will definitely keep you informed of that, I, I'm going to assume we're going to carry on our next meeting, but we'll verify that with you.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Any other comments for the good of the Board?
I make the motion, we adjourn.
Is there a second? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, folks, you have a good night.